So that would be phase one is is defined in the handout I gave you. Phase two, which would be next year, later next year, would be to actually look at some trail development on that side of Major's Park. You're familiar with the fact that Kessinview Creek bisects the park. There's the the northern part of of Major's Park. Is the part that most residents are most familiar with, entrance off of Ole Anne Road. It's a nice entrance, plenty of parking. Um, you immediately have some picnic tables there. There is some benches on on a hill overlooking that part of the park. And then there is, of course, the boardwalk that everybody likes. And there's actually seating on the boardwalk. So that part of Major's Park, north of Kessinview Creek, actually constitutes only probably about a quarter of Major's Park. To appreciate the rest of the park, you have to go around to Hubbard Road. And it's that Hubbard Road southern section of the park that the Open Space Committee is really involved with. So beyond improving the parking, improved signage, um, we would like to get into some trail development and I kind of. We don't really have a firm idea in mind yet of where the trail should go. There's a hatched area on the colored map I gave you that basically says, we're thinking of maybe a circular route uh in that part of the park. Avoiding some of the, there are some really wet areas down there, um, avoiding some of that. Um, and then circling around to a rather unique opportunity. There's actually two rather unique opportunities in it majors that we could take advantage of. One is to create a circular park that would include the Hubbard Cabin. Um, as you, many of you know, the Hubbard Cabin has kind of come and gone under and and over the past couple of years. Gets a lot of interest for a while, then it kind of fades away, then gets more interest. We think it's worthy of uh making sure that we have access to that. Hubbard Cabin through the trail we would develop. Hopefully that would lead to some further preservation efforts for the Hubbard Cabin. That same part of the park, there's another unique opportunity because there is an entrance to the Hubbard Cabin off of Hubbard Road. Which is almost uh across from an entrance to Owens Falls at Hubbard Road. So we could actually create a connection between Owens Falls, go out into Hubbard Road, go just a hundred yards down the road and you back into Major's Park. So you can actually make a nice connection between the 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 two open space areas. That whole trail development and those connections, as I said, are kind of the second phase of the project and we looked at. Once we get phase one done, which would be the improved um signage and parking at um on Hubbard Road. So that's kind of where the Open Space Committee is thinking at the present time, a nice project that we can undertake. Um, that would enhance the users' capabilities for the southern section of 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 um Major's Park. The um, our plans at the present time do not include, I just want to be clear in this, do not include a bridge over to the, over the creek to the north side. It's, you know, we've looked at some of the opportunities for that. We've actually spoke with with Dave Gunner about this. And it's just um, in terms of the construction expense and the maintenance expense, it would be a lovely idea. But it just seems like it would be really, really difficult to do. So we're, maybe that's phase 10 of the project. You know, but right now we're not considering it. Uh, it would just be to develop what we can off of Hubbard Road. That would kind of occupy us through twenty three, uh, twenty twenty-three. Um, I did list a couple of other projects on here that I think we wanted to undertake. We would like to get this plan updated. Um, particularly because hopefully uh if the town should ever up to update its master plan, this should feed into the master plan. When the Mill Road overlook was constructed, and that was kind of the flagship project years ago for the Open Space Committee. Some of the funders for that Mill Road overlook were told that there would also be some trails that Mill Road. I don't know whether it's feasible or not, and it certainly is not an area you want to overwhelm with trails because there's a lot of wildlife down in there, a lot of bird nesting areas. But we will look at the possibility of maybe a s- a single trail down and back uh at Mill Road. Um, some of those promises were made to the funders and I think it's worthy just taking a look at. And then finally, I think where we're heading, where we're heading with the Open Space Committee is to look at all of the open space opportunities that have been created throughout the town over the years. Um, and seeing if there's any way of making some sort of connections between them, if not physical connections, at least signage. Um, so that people can really get a better grasp on how much of the community has has been preserved for their enjoyment. We have this unique opportunity uh at Major's Park with connecting it directly to Owens Falls. Some of them may not be that direct, but there is that opportunity there at least, and we're going to explore that. I've provided you with some maps kind of outlining what we're going to be doing, um, comparing the current conditions at the two different entrances. And you can see the discrepancies there. So at this point, excuse me, at this point, I would just say, does anybody have any questions, comments?
I I would just say that these are all great ideas. Just a point of the Hubbard Cabin. Have you actually physically looked at it?
It did not come to my attention until the weather kind of deteriorated to the point where I I haven't been back there, no.
Councilman Snyder, myself, uh, been up there several times and um.
I understand it's in rough shape.
Yeah, I I don't know if you you could probably build a new one. I don't know if you could save that one. I. He's a contractor. I'm not, and I looked at it and I um, it's, it's actually probably a building that should, something should happen to it because it's dangerous. But having said, I just wanted to make sure you guys, you know, were aware of the condition of it.
And that might be one of those features that ultimately, even if, even if the cabin no longer exists, you would have trails on the sign. You know, here's the site of, you see those sometimes in historic places, you know, the site of the former Hubbard Cabin, maybe a little explanation of what it was.
You get an idea about maybe using some of the brick.
Yeah, it's a, there's kind of a neat fireplace and that, and that's, not that you would ever build a fire in a site, but yeah. But maybe that could stay in something, a little something built around it. And then, as you say, it's, this is the site of. Um, that maybe, or something along those lines.
Good stuff.
Yeah. One thing I failed to mention was at the parking ar- area, um, there's a kiosk there that we've already spoken to um, OSs about. And see if they want to help rebuild it, renovate it in some fashion, and they are interested in undertaking that as a project. They have a lot of projects on the plate right now, but that would be something that they said they would be very interested in helping the town to uh to kind of revitalize that. Got the kiosk this there. So.
I uh, I think we need to add here, Dale, thank you to you for your role in bringing back the, I mean, I know you've been on it the whole time, but uh. Dale has been reluctantly, reluctant to use the word chairperson of the committee. However, I think at least chairperson i- in in reality is probably true. So thank you for everything you did. I mean, we all recognize that the open spaces in the town of Rorar would make it attractive for us to live here. And I'm I'm happy that we have the committee up and going again, looking at these things to make sure that it remains that way for many years to come. So.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. And I never blink at a meeting because at the last meeting when we were trying to decide who should be chairman, I think I blinked first. And and Joe kind of said, I think Dale just volunteered.
You're hired.
He raised his eyes. Uh, Dale, I do have a question for you. As far as um, you had mentioned about connecting in some way the the different parts of different open spaces. Uh, I I I don't think that there's any type of website or Facebook page or anything like that. Uh, has your committee considered anything like that as far as a connection? And maybe also to promote some of the projects and promote um some community input.
It's a great idea, and I think we'll we'll definitely take a look at that. I think it's it's an excellent start for that.
I think just to to add to that, we are reviewing uh working actively on the social media policy. And so before you make a page, I would wait until, I I think we'll probably have it ready by next meeting to present for the board's review or probably a separate work session. But uh, we are working on that, so don't go making any pages just yet.
Don't worry about that. At my age, I don't know how to make a.
Compete with Highway Superintendent Gunner's post anyways.
Yeah, I just want to thank Dale for all the hard work. It really looks great. Um, with the pandemic, we kind of didn't do a lot in the parks for a couple of years. It's nice to see to go back to these plans. They've been kicked around for the fourteen years I've been doing it. And I think that the highway would totally be able to help them. The only thing that I told Dale and the space committee was, is it comes to funding. Our parks is a very small budget. And I noticed in your um agenda, like you compared the Major's Park sign to the one on Hubbard Road. The one in Major's Park was about $2,000, the one at Hubbard Road was 50. So I I'm not sure, you know, if that's what you want to do. You know, I want to make sure. We can do just about anything that's low cost, build trails, build little parking lots and spread rail fence. But if you're talking real dollar figures, you'd have to, like that kiosk, work with the board. Cause our entire parks budget's only $7,500 and that's for every park we have. It we just don't have a ton of funding for big ticket things. That's all. Okay.
And and I just wanted to add, thank you so much for working. John Hughes is on the committee, is back there too. Yeah, and and Hubbard, and we talked about this Hubbard Cabin, you know, I talked to the expert in all things historical, uh, Rob Gohler. And he even said it's it's not actually connected to Albert. I think it was his kids. That started that cabin. So but if if I think in with what uh Councilman Snyder was saying, preserve the fireplace and make it a cool little spot. Stop and take a breather between the, when you're doing both parks in one, one fell swoop. So, but thanks for everybody's hard work. I certainly appreciate it.
All right.
I'd like to make an official note that November 28th is the time that Councilman McCann spoke ill of the Hubbard's.
I wasn't a big fan of their haircuts.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Look forward to it, working with you.
All right, next we have a uh offer from Comp Alliance, it's our workman's comp um carrier. Uh, to provide funding um and going on a two-year term, we would get a 5% funding decrease. They've been great to work with. Um, I'll, you know, in, just in full closure, I am a trustee for them. Uh, and I've worked with them. We got, we just got a check for $7,000 this year because we had a safe workplace check. And um Kathleen recommends that uh we also go for that two-year term, so open for discussion.
I'm I'm all for it since we would probably stay with them anyway, right? Jim, I mean, we're you we're, we have no complaints. We have nobody else knocking on the door saying I can give you a better deal.
I don't think you'll get one.
And I probably won't get one, so I, I don't see a reason why we would.
That's good.
Yeah, I read through the, I mean, it wasn't the most exciting read in the world, but uh I read through it and it all looked good to, good to me.
Jim, you good?
Good. Hey, did I get a chance to take a look at it? I just, um, oh, there's always a question. I I'm not quite sure if this is something that needs to be bit out. I don't know that it does because it's um, uh, it's a plan, you know.
Um, it it doesn't, you can, if you feel, suppose if you feel that um the rates aren't good. I can tell you just from checking around that they're very, very competitive plus um you're you're locked into a 5% decrease for two years. Really helps when you do the budget and uh.
I think that was really exceptional and Jim and, you know, you guys have owned a business, so you know how expensive comp can be.
It's one of the most expensive parts of.
Great, thank you.
Okay, get on the agenda. Next we have the proposed updates for to the personal policy. Uh, did you all get a chance to read through them? Do you need me to read through them or are we good with them or any questions?
I I my only question was on the flex, the flex time, why we would get rid of that. What was the reasoning behind not having the flex time? Cause it seems like. It it's probably pretty good for some employees.
It's really probably not a, something we should be doing in the labor world. And uh our labor attorney. Mrs. Jambro, she recog- she recognized what we were doing and we asked her and she said we should really get rid of it.
So so if there is a need outside of hours to pay overtime.
We do the comp, we do the comp. And then uh, we're going to have a staff meeting. If this gets approved, we're going to have a staff meeting and explain it to the department head. That um, you've got to watch, you got your people time, your people's times and uh. Because uh, the lunch hour will be considered time work now. And so anything over that forty hours will be comp time at time and a half. But um, that's the the legal way of doing things and we probably um should do that.
So was it, I guess I I was unaware of how it was currently. So a typical employee, highway being our biggest department, you were unpaid on your lunch. We took a half hour lunch. Did you end up working an eight and a half hour day?
Right, this was not, this is non-union.
Non-union, I'm sorry, non-union. So it'd be an eight-hour day with with a half hour unpaid lunch, is that, or what, was it an eight and a half hour day? Well, hour hour paid, so okay. But that's how we're going to keep it. Okay, and within that you get an hour lunch. Gotcha. So how does this change that precisely?
Well, there will be no flex time anymore. Okay, the flex time, so it'll be comp time.
Yeah, comp time, so.
Time and a half, not regular time.
So you're in comp time, you're.
Anything over forty, you're in comp. Anything else?
I I did have, just, I need a little clarification here on the, on the proposed updated policy, 3.04 overtime compensation. The uh third line down says compensation, compensatory time may be accumulated up to a maximum of 240 hours. It may be preserved, used as time off or cashed out. And in the next line, it says. Compens- compensatory time must be used or cashed out during the fiscal year earned. And I think that's a lot of time. To build up and then to use in that year.
Now, which one are you on? Are you on the proposed one or are you on the current one?
I have a proposed one, yeah. Proposed updated policy. This one, a back one page.
Oh, the 240 for one year?
Yeah, 240 hours. Pre- early use this time off.
Obviously, we don't want. Well, uh.
Must be used at that fiscal year. I mean, that 240 hours is obviously six weeks.
Um, well.
Could you build that much up?
Could you say, say, uh, say, uh. Say the rec- recu- five hours a week with Chris. You know, a lot of times he puts a lot of hours in during the, the summer months with swimming and all that and everything. And then towards the end of the year, when everything stops, kind of the recu department, he's got all these hours.
Yeah.
And really shouldn't be flexed out, but you'd be. So uh, is it going to be up to 240 hours? No.
Again, even at five hours a week, you that it would take you the year to build it up and you got to use it that year. So. It's a lot. It's, it's a lot.
But it has to be approved, right? Wasn't that a previous, all overtime has to be approved by the department head? So they can't just accumulate willy-nilly. There has to be a legitimate reason, you know, some sort of stress around the department.
Right, and we're gonna try to to watch that even closer now.
So they earn the time, I guess, just to make sure I have this clear. So comp time is earned at one and a half. So I work an hour in overtime, I get one and a half comp time, which I have the option of either taking an hour and a half off or collecting an hour and a half of pay.
That's correct.
Which you could accumulate up to 240s that can carry over, but the max, even if you carry over 239, you can't earn two more that year, essentially.
Which probably isn't going to happen.
Can't carry over though.
Is, uh, the proposal is to carry over, I thought.
No, it's to limit it. It's maximum 240, wait. You have to use it that year.
Cops, compensatory time must be used or cashed out during the fiscal year.
What does it mean to be preserved then?
Throughout the year, I think. So if you do it in January, you can keep it until December. That's how I read that.
You can't carry it, yes.
Uh, unless it was earned in December, it did say that, that you could carry it over through. But I mean, generally speaking, to me, that's a lot of comp time. That's all, but.
I, so I.
Done the payroll, I mean, it's. I don't know why that number is so high, but um.
Yeah. But whatever it is, it's got to be used that year, which is the way it is now. I mean, we've made exceptions for things to happen at the end of the year.
Flex got rolled over.
Flex, the flex thing got rolled over, yeah.
So I'm just wondering again about that preserve, that what if it refers to, it says it can be used, preserved or cashed out. Uh, perhaps that means when it is earned. So you could take it as a cash out and in January, February, March, April, is it, do you think that's what it means?
Right, in that year that you earned it.
In the year that you earn it, but I'm talking about the pay period that you're in it.
Yeah, you cashed out, I get you. I you could do, I'm just thinking of the use, how would you take the comp time? If you had, if you had five weeks off and you earned that five weeks off, 240 hours, I mean, you certainly aren't going to do that in January and February.
Well, I'd probably do it in January and February. I go visit Jim in Florida and I'd spend January, February on that.
Hey, Jim, I I I wonder if we actually gain something by deleting after the word hours. The whole rest of that sentence in that text. Compens- compensatory time may be accumulated up to a maximum of 240 hours, period. Compensatory time must be used or cashed out during the fiscal year earned. And then if compensatory time is earned in the month of December, I don't think we lose anything with that. It does become a little bit more clear.
If that's what it means, I maybe we could just ask her that question, ask the attorney that question, because preserved, I I think probably means. Throughout, throughout the course of the year, rather than getting cashed out at that pay period.
No, but would it would be clearer if we just deleted that, I think, if we could.
They, except the question would come up, can I get the cash for it right now or do I have to wait till the end of the year?
I think the next sentence says it, compensatory time must be used or cashed out during the fiscal year earned.
And I really think it's kind of irrelevant because it's just that number, you know, why is that number so big? Cause it would take so much over to earn it.
Yeah, I appreciate that, but my my question is sort of regardless of that, uh, because again, maybe you're not going to do the 240. But if you work five hours a week, uh, overtime and you cash it out every single week, you're not taking six weeks, you're getting the cash, the ten and a half for it.
Exactly, Jim.
And you can, and you can get it at the at the pay period, right?
Yes, you can.
Yeah, sure.
So that's why I was, I I appreciate you guys are saying that, it's just not clear in here.
Oh, okay.
For some of.
That's my understanding from Kathleen and and Ms. Jambro.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, so I would propose to make that clear, getting rid of that language after hours.
You still want to put this uh on the agenda and just.
Cause when I read it too, I had to admit, I didn't, it would kind of, when I'm looking back, so you did, it was kind of, kind of contradictory. You read it and you're like, oh yay. And then like during fiscal year, oh, well, yeah, so, yeah. So I think that clears it up. I don't know, Bridget, do you agree with that?
I do.
Yeah, okay.
When you uh, you can make the motion on that.
I remember what I said by then.
Then we good? Uh, next we have the uh Western New York, uh, Southtown's uh scenic byway. And they're looking for a letter of support for TS um, um, electronic possibly at the new stadium. Uh, we do support them now um financially. Um, and if you've ever seen their, yes, they're all over the place, to the, to the scenic byway, the um. Um, the canal area, it's all got the scenic by, so um. Just wondering if you guys are okay with me signing a letter of support?
Uh, the only thing I I thought is that if we change legislator John Mills to legislator Larigo. Yeah, I just know that they, yeah, at least copy him, Larigo, because he's ours. I wouldn't want it to be, you know, going to another legislator around his back.
Good.
Good, true. He'll be out December 31st anyways, right?
That's true, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Okay, next is the local law video conferencing. And this is a, this is just a um notice of public hearing that we'd be um looking at this. 12th day of December. Martha, when's it going to be for? The public hearing for the. For the local law?
Yep.
Twenty-three though. Okay. So our next meeting, right?
Yeah.
All right. So has everyone read the local law?
The video conferencing.
Yeah. And and then uh also is the, we have the video video conferencing policy that follows up with it. So you guys read that, you're happy.
Absolutely. Thank you for working on that, Bridget. Looks very good.
Thank you, Martha.
Bridget and Martha, I think, yeah, worked very hard on that. So we're good with both of those. Next we have a local law public hearing. This will be on the 12th of December also for the Adult Use Code Amendment. And this was a change Joe, you wanted to make, right?
Yes.
Code. And uh. Something to do.
It eliminated the part about male and female impersonators.
Right. So that's basically all we did, was take that out of the code, right? Everyone good with that? Setting that date, okay? Next we have the special use um permit. An application for Boys Road. And uh, we have a couple of people here tonight, the Bojowski's. You want to come up to the mic and uh. So um, Councilman Snyder and myself met Mr. Bojanowski and talked about the uh event that he has. And um, the lights and the music and everything on Boys Road. And uh, the purpose of the meeting was how can we achieve this and still be safe? And we came up with a few ideas. I'll let you talk a little bit unless you want to say something first or.
No, I I think.
No, absolutely, I'll start. I'm I'm Mike Bojanowski. Uh, I reside at 1840 Boys Road. I moved in there in 2019. Um, just to give you a little backstory, uh, I've been doing Christmas lights for a long time. I've actually ran a couple of competitions here in Western New York and have been runner-ups. Um, I actually proposed to my wife with Christmas lights that made the news. Um, and I actually wrote on the roof, will you marry me with checkboxes for yes and no? And I handed her a controller and I let her pick which one it was. Um, and she clicked yes. Little did she know, both buttons went to yes, so she didn't have an option. Um, but essentially, what it came down to is we built our dream home uh in East Aurora, that's where she's originally from. Uh, me and my father-in-law actually built the house and uh I've always wanted to carry that Christmas light tradition um to our, to our house. So um, we actually, our first year living there, I wasn't able to do anything too creative. We just put lights up on the house. And then the pandemic hit, 2020, uh, and and that gave me some time um to actually kind of work up something. I'm a, I'm a mechanical engineer by trade, so creatively I I've come up with a program uh that I thought would be a little something fun for everybody to enjoy when everything was shut down. So I did that. And unfortunately, when you, when you, when you do something, um, when nobody has anything to do, it becomes something of a bigger surprise and people want to go and see it. When you start something, uh, normally you gradually get bigger as people, more and more people hear it. This this did opposite and it actually grew attention quickly. Um, and then kind of from what I seen faded away. Um, 2020, we can agree that it was just a a lot of, of, a lot of people showing up. It was a little overwhelming. So um, to that aspect, uh, I had sat down with my wife and we had tried to come up with ways for the following year to try to make this show a little bit more organized. Um, so we invested money and time into creating Facebook pages for the following year, expecting to hopefully hear from the board or even the town to kind of come up with a solution for this. Following uh two years ago, the 2020 meeting. So we we did not hear anything at that point. So we took it upon ourselves to kind of invest the time and money and put out pages um and get our light show to the public eye. And let them know that there are some restrictions, whether it be only parking on one side of the road, whether I have your hazards on, whether it be to pull up in 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 front of the car in front of you. So that there were no large gaps, so no, nobody was further enough down the road. Uh, we were trying to keep the flow of traffic. That was what we were trying to maintain. That was our biggest goal. Um, so in doing so, last year was kind of like our baseline is kind of where we looked at it. Um, I almost wanted to do an audit with the town just to kind of see exactly where it stood on a normal basis. I can say that last year, for the first two weeks, almost nobody came. Um, it was gradual. You would get five to 10 cars on the weekdays and then your weekends, you would maybe have um maybe 30 cars through the night. Uh, it was not that big of a deal until it got closer to Christmas. That the two weeks prior to Christmas is when we really started to see the traffic flow. But again, nothing is nearly as crazy as 2020. Um, we felt that the the signs that we had, we had put on there, we we seen that the police, Easter or Police Department did put their posted signs on there. Which, if we all know that it's a very open area there with open fields, the wind comes through there and takes those off. So I took it upon myself to put up steel signs on our side of the road, which would be the east side. Um, so that no cars were parking on our side of the road. It was just that they would pull up, they can park on the west side. Um, and therefore just move along and wouldn't have the double traffic. One thing we did notice is anybody who was double parked. Um, it may have been due to the fact that they were on our side of the road looking at the sign. Um, we were big fans of donating and helping raise money for certain programs around here. Um, we did help raise $2,000 for Rock and $1,000 for Compass House. Um, so with that being said, we we put that in our lawn. Uh, there wasn't a box, you can get out of your car and go and donate. You actually had to look at the link, type it in your phone, and it would go to a GoFundMe account and that would get. Uh, there wasn't a box you can get out of your car and go and donate. You actually had to look at the link, type it in your phone and it would go to a GoFundMe account and that would get directed right to the company. Uh, so people were stopping and looking at that sign. Um, we are not doing that this year because we don't want to have anybody have to have to come up to the yard, look at a sign and try to read it, so. That is no longer going to be the case. Um, one thing I would, or a couple of things I would like to propose moving forward. Is um, we would actually like to keep our timeframe within the just the month of December. There's no sense of uh doing it the following Thanksgiving. Um, if we could just keep it within the month of December, I feel like you would get the four to five weekends, depending where it falls, um, that we could get out of it. Uh, next thing is we could also reduce the number of days that the show is actually being held. If we did like a Thursday through Sunday, uh, that gives two weekends. Um, or the two weekend days, and then of course, two weekdays. Uh, we do know. That if we were to remove one or the other, it just would be too congested and that's what we're trying not to do. However, um, again, this is all kind of just going to play out how it will. As we move forward because it's new, so it's it's unseen at the moment, but we don't want to congest it, but at the same time, we want to be able to control it, so. Um, with that, we would move it down to about four days a week and we would also reduce the time that it was was going on. Uh, we used to have fourteen songs in the loop at the time and we'd actually cut that into half down to seven songs between five and seven songs is where we think we can make it to. Uh, be somewhat enjoyable and 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 actually not people staying there too long to see the same song twice, because if they like a song, they'll say, hey, look, I can. It's only true if they love, really like the song, they're going to want to stick right there, keep through it. So if we we space it out enough, it makes it enough that they're out of there, but at the same time, they're leaving at a good flow rate. Um, so those are the 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 things we're proposing at this time. Um, I I think it would save on the hassle of the everyday today. Uh, it would save me a lot of work as well because it's a lot of work running these shows. It takes me about thirty hours to program per song. I have five hundred hours in programming. Uh, but again, it's something I enjoy and I'm not looking for the sympathy for it, but I hope everyone does get to enjoy it. I just don't want it to be too congested at certain times, so. That's kind of the approach we're taking with it right now, um, until we hear otherwise.
And I will say that um, Mr. Bojanowski was not here. Last meeting because he didn't know he had to be here, he should be here, or we were even going to talk about the meeting, so that that was on us. Uh, we need to communicate that better and we're gonna, we're gonna try to fix those problems, but it really wasn't on you. I I would, and we talked about these concessions to to try to make this work. And my only thing would be that if. If uh, the police department got called out there and we were having a bad night or something, that we'd shut it down.
Absolutely. We've actually shut down the show um in the past due to the weather conditions, so it's nothing that we would not do. Um, we have no problem turning it off, especially during whiteout, something like that, even high drifts. Uh, I have no problem turning it off. Absolutely not.
Questions in the world?
Thank you for doing it for the community, first of all, you know, as we do have a duty here to look for the safety of residents as well.
Absolutely.
We're not trying to do anything anti-holiday here or to make it difficult on you just because. It it, but it was very popular and we've been out there several times as well and really enjoyed it, so thanks for doing it. Um, but it is, the safety is a concern. I'm glad you came in to speak about it and uh, if we have these these measures. Um, and you're willing to have an open dialogue with us as this progresses, so we can make sure that it remains safe, then, you know, obviously it's a great thing for the community.
Absolutely.
And if you're interested for more, we have had initial talks, I have had initial talks with the village and some local organizations about the villages' holiday decorations as well. And if that's something that you have as a hobby, you could certainly join us if we ever do make a committee with the Chamber of Commerce to look into how to improve our holiday decorations around the area in general.
Of course.
You just email me on the town website.
Will do.
I'll give you some more programming hours for your uh, your five hundred hours. Yeah, I want to say this, basically I echo what Luke said. It's it's a great show. I took uh, the first year you did it. I took my kids out there and they absolutely loved it. I loved it too, so.
Thank you.
And and we appreciate it. I think it's great and I and I very much appreciate you being willing to just keep an eye on safety. Not that you weren't already doing that, but you know, let everybody sort of. Air their concerns and see what you do to make it as safe as possible. Thank you very much.
Just one more thing to add to the concessions that we kind of discussed there or threw out there was that the uh, the show would end at what time?
We would do it five to nine. Our our initial year in twenty twenty, we did do it till ten and on the weekends, uh, first year we did do it till eleven, but it's five to nine every day, what weekend or weekday.
Yeah.
So uh, the lights go off at nine or just the music?
Nope, the light, everything off. When the days of the shows, everything goes off at nine.
So if um, are you guys in favor of putting this on the agenda?
I have, I just had a couple more things.
Sure, I was just going to say that um, Liz, does he do this application through your office? Is that through Martha? So we would have to just amend his. Application, right, to list these items. Okay, okay. I'm sorry, go ahead, Jeff.
No, it's all right.
Yeah, I think um, I think as you know, there's a lot of people that appreciate uh, what you do. Uh, it's it's very interesting. It's very exciting. Uh, and there's people that live in the area that that aren't as appreciative. Uh, and and uh, meeting uh, with Jim and meeting with Chuck uh, is really uh, I I think just a great step. Uh, a great to say I'm, I want to be part of the community and I want to do something that's uh, you know, good for the community in addition to, you know, just uh, the lights and music, but working and the concessions. Uh, I think a lot of the things that we were talking about at our last session is, hey, maybe we can do this a little bit differently and and everything here seems, I I I hope you're happy with the concessions. So I think it'd be uh favorable. Uh, but one of the concerns I also had too was that uh, uh, I'm not sure um. What you're able to see as far as the traffic and the conditions of what's going on. I'm not asking you to go out there with a flashlight and knock on windows. But uh, one of the concerns was. Uh, one of the concerns was that um, uh, some of the people who uh, you don't know personally, who are but are coming to see the show would park. In front of driveways and that uh, obviously is difficult if you want to come or go and you happen to live there, but also if there's an emergency situation. And there's a car parked there and maybe it stops because they decided to turn off their engine and listen to the music and then they ran out of, you know, the battery. Are you able to see your neighbor's driveways? Are you able to communicate uh, in the same way that you communicate with the um? Um, GoFundMe and uh.
Absolutely. We could, and we could put out messages through our, through our page as far as Facebook goes, but as far as the driveways go, I have about two hundred and fifty feet of frontage. And there's about another a hundred and fifty feet of frontage of dead fields um adjacent to that. There are two opposing driveways on the other other side of the field as well as adjacent to my house. Um, if you are in either one of those driveways, you cannot see the show. So again, I'm I'm assuming uh, nobody intentionally wants to block any driveways. Um, very rarely have I ever seen a driveway blocked. Um, and again, that was only in twenty twenty. Again, uh, people were just trying to make their way around, but for most of the part. Uh, no driveways are being blocked and I can in fact go down there if ever be the case and and straighten it out if that ever need be.
Yeah, I I would appreciate that because there's so much good in there and then um, I I I think if if something, you know, God forbid, something happens where there's a car stuck in in a fire truck, police. Ambulance can't get in, um, that'd be tragic.
Yes.
Thanks so much for what you do. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming tonight.
Good, thank you.
We'll uh, we'll vote on it at the, our next meeting after this meeting.
Okay.
Uh, but it looks like it's going to be a positive vote, so if you don't want to stay, you don't have to, you you can, it's up to you.
Next, next meeting, meeting right after this meeting.
Okay, I wasn't sure of us. Yeah, understood, tonight.
This is our work session.
This is a work session. Okay, thank.
Okay. Next, we want to talk about the East Fillmore Bridge and um. Maybe a little history and an informational meeting because there's really nothing to vote on for us um. I've been involved uh. With this issue probably since two thousand and nine. And uh, I can just, I'll give a little history. I think Dave maybe wants to talk about it too, but. Um, the uh, the bridges started needing some some attention in the village and um DOT cited. Um, the village on fixing them. Um, they determined that um, they don't think it was the um, villages' bridges, it was the towns. We went through judicial judgment, you know, uh, we want to find out whose whose bridges these are, so the village sued the town. The uh, went to Buffalo Court and the village won that lawsuit. The town then appealed that lawsuit and went to the appellate court in Rochester. And it was a unanimous five judge decision in the town's favor. And the village then took and appealed that decision to the Court of Appeals. In uh, New York, Albany, I believe it is. And um, it is a court of seven. Judges and the village won four to three, so it was pretty complicated issue. But um, long story short. The town is responsible uh, for all bridges in the town and the village. When this was happening though, in two thousand fifteen, that didn't happen till what, two thousand eighteen? Eighteen, in two thousand fifteen. The village deemed that the East Fillmore Bridge was unsafe and closed the road. Um, so we looked at it, we were in litigation and um. There were some people upset the road was closed. Dave and I went down there, we took a contractor down there. And decided we could do a temporary fix with some cement. Um. And I'm not real a bridge expert, but the wing walls were were caving in, so the water is getting in behind the old concrete and then I'll let you go on with that a little bit, but. Um, bottom line is we we spent about twenty or thirty thousand dollars and did a temporary repair to get it back open. Um. So the bottom line is now um, we've had our engineer look at it. I think the village's engineer has looked at that bridge.
Yeah, just to go back to the twenty fifteen year crack, we put it out to bed to three contractors and uh, our engineering firm at that time. Said that this would be a temporary fix to get the re- road reopened. At that time, we didn't own the bridge, but we decided for the good of the public to just. Do that. And then it spent three more years in court and then finally the issue was resolved and the ownership was transferred to the town in twenty eighteen. At that time, we directed our town attorney's firm, GHD, to do an assessment of all the bridges, not just one, every single one of them. That time, we found that there was four that were deficient that needed to be replaced. I came up with a five-year plan that I presented to the town board at that time that called for taking an immediate loan out to repair two of them with replacement. And also to uh, postpone the other two to try to win grants for them. We did the first two, as you know. Later, we brought in a new engineer, so this is now the third engineer that went, looked at Fillmore, East Fillmore and Church Street, declared it. That it was insufficient, need to be changed. We applied with the state and we were really lucky or blessed that we won a free bridge to the town of Aurora taxpayers for both of them. And so. This not only was looked at by three different engineering firms, it also went through the Bridge New York process, which is a intense process with engineers from across the state. To determine if this bridge need to be changed. They agreed with it. They awarded us the money. So there's no question that that bridge had to be changed. At this time. We're leaving the road open. I talked to the village superintendent. He's asked me to try to make it through winter. The road. Needs to be closed and it will be closed April first. April first, we will start demolishing the bridge. So I don't know if you want to keep going on that.
Well, that's, yeah, is there, if I had something?
Yeah, I just wanted Dave to to uh, talk about the, because there's discussion on. Uh, whether, a couple of options, whether they just close the road and don't put a bridge in, or some people want a one-lane bridge. The grants for two-lane bridge, can you explain all that?
So so first off, let's start with just closing the bridge. We can't do that. It's illegal, okay? Only way that you can close a bridge is if the road is abandoned. That's highway law. The only way you can abandon a road is if you can do a traffic study over a week that shows that no more than two cars per day cross that bridge. With there being houses on each side of that, that's a lost cause. That road is going to stay there, okay? So the village could attempt to. Abandon the road such as we did on Sweet Road and we have a bridge up there that's still sitting there, but until that road is officially abandoned, it's illegal. To permanently close a bridge. It's not legal. We have no choice but to fix the bridge, so we can ignore this problem and if it fell in, we still have to fix the bridge. So that issue right off the bat isn't even possible to close that road. We can't do that, okay? Uh, a pedestrian bridge, same answer. Um, when it comes to the one-lane road. The state DOT is who we won this grant from. We have no say on the construction of this bridge at all. That's the caveat with winning the Bridge New York Grant, which is a good thing because they're going to pay for it. The downside is we don't have the controlling what we would if we did it ourselves, okay? The state does not consider a one-lane bridge a sufficient bridge, okay? We've talked to them. It's never happened. They don't build one-lane bridges. If they did agree to do it, it would have to have extreme extenuating circumstances. With property that wouldn't make it possible and even if they did agree to do it, it would require a drawbar, it would require our traffic lights because the state DOT. Is not going to let a one-lane bridge not be safe like the current one is. So when we went to Bridge New York. And we won the grant, we effectively agreed to building it the way the DOT would build it.
Luke, did you want? Yeah, I think so. Uh, we we have put a lot of time into this. I was at a couple of village board meetings as well with um, with with Dave. Um, there's a couple of things that we had heard during the village meeting online that I'd just like to sort of deal with here before you give your comments. And to give some basis as to what our decision is, which isn't really even really a decision, I think at this point. Uh, first of all, the bridge, as Dave said, the bridge will not last. It's in bad shape.
I sent it to you. It was uh, covered over in nineteen forty. That's eighty-two years, okay? There is no concrete out there, a lifespan of any bridge that has a lifespan of where that one is as it sits. I mean, there's no guaranteeing that the 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 girders underneath it, we really can't tell because they're encased in concrete. But the bridge is at the end of its effective lifespan, any way you want to look at it.
Right, so that that's the first premise that we we base. I don't know if anyone's here to talk about that, but the first premise is that that bridge is no longer functionable, function, right? The second premise, and I spoke to DOT representatives and Dave has as well, regional in Albany, um, it is, it is. Not impossible, but would be extremely unprecedented for us to be able to amend our application from a two-lane bridge. Which the state determines as safe to a less safe bridge being a one-lane bridge, which the state. Would not, would not do. I mean, not impossible. You could get Governor Hokel out here maybe and something and find, I don't know, an artifact underneath it. But it it would be unprecedented. And so the application. Could be changed in theory, but every single change that has happened in the past, according to the DOT, has been to improve safety, not to. Do something like take a two-lane and make it to a one-lane road. I think the last thing too is is the the New York Bridge Grant is competitive. And so when we applied for the, when Dave applied for the bridge grant. Um, it would have also been unprecedented for for a one-lane bridge to be in that area that would have been funded by New York State. Why? There have been one or two or three one-lane bridges in the past. Um, there's an element, one was across the Erie Canal. Where there were some historical parts to the bridge that were next to it that could not be um disturbed. Um, so something else in other parts of the state, so really the circumstances surrounding those bridges that were awarded a a grant. Were also exceptional. And so it would have been extremely unprecedented as well to receive a grant for a one-lane bridge. The grant amount is nine hundred thousand dollars and the reason why the state. Would not award for a one-lane bridge is because it is unsafe compared to a two-lane bridge in the states. This is the DOT. So I think all of those things are what we base that on and I understand that there's a, there's a desire to keep acquaintances in the neighborhoods. There's some property that will be, will be changed. Um, but we do have to keep in mind that we are making a decision based on not only the fiscal responsibility of the town, but also the safety of of anyone who goes down that road, which. Is more than local residents who are aware of the one-lane nature of that that bridge. So I I know it may not be a popular decision with people in this room, um, but I guess. Those are the elements that at least I look at when looking at this issue. Number one, the bridge cannot stay the way it is. It is not safe. Number two, you would not be able to replace that two-lane bridge with a one-lane bridge with the state's support. And the number three, the reason for that is because it is less safe as a one-lane bridge than a two-lane bridge, so.
And and just to, just to add on to that too, I too met with Dave and the engineers. And although I don't think it was the final, final uh, plan that he had that day, but there was no disturbance of uh, um, anything past the right of way on the streets. As it's.
Their final preliminary to you all today, um, we completely are staying within the right of way.
Yeah.
Now, that plan is with the assumption. Now, that plan is with the assumption of what I brought to the village is. Just to make this clear, is the proposal to reconfigure the road and put the sidewalk in. When we come up with a design, we put in the desired things. That doesn't mean that's gonna happen. That's gonna be up to the village because, like I explained at the village board meeting, once we're out of the bridge approach, it's not our job anymore. The same with the sidewalk. So when we put a plan together, it's the suggestion. It doesn't mean that part's gonna happen. We're on hold right now, just waiting to see if the village agrees with our suggestion. And if they don't, then we have to alter the plan. So those issues, if those are the residents' issues, they have nothing to do with. The town board. Um they're out of our jurisdiction.
Dave, can you explain too about the ice jamming and uh the difference between a one-lane and a two-lane?
Yeah, so I I believe, and of course, we really don't know, the Bridge New York is uh competitive with over nine hundred municipalities. And basically, when you put the grant together, you're trying to sell the need. And what we did is we worked with the advertiser and the town historian to show how the 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 historic ice jamming of Tannery Brook. Has done tons of damage over the years to the east Aurora area. Um we brought up pictures of that and we sold that, that that would help with it. There's no question. Two things, a new bridge period is gonna have hydraulic velocity probably three times of what that is over there now. What's there now? That even the residents, you have to know that that's not working anymore. There's been development over the past hundred years that is much more than. That bridge can handle. So it's gonna be wider, uh longer, I guess you would call it. But also too, when you do it wider, you're also increasing the hydraulic capacity on the width end too with the two-lane bridge. So we're trying to accomplish two goals here. I don't know if we could ever cure Tannery Brook with flooding unless. The village or somebody went through block by block and redid the whole creek. But at least for what the town's in charge of, we're gonna put in the best thing that hopefully mitigates at least. The choke points of the bridges. We've done this on Whaley, we've done it on North Grove. Last winter, we found it was successful. Uh we did very well with the big ice jam that came through. Um one of them was at Church Street, a very big one. So that's. Again, these old bridges were built in eighteen hundreds or early nineteen hundreds. Things have changed since then. And nobody's maintaining that creek and it's full of trees. So the two-lane bridge is actually going to help with that too. I can't guarantee that we'll never have an ice jam again, but we're gonna do everything in our power to make sure that it doesn't.
Alright, so just to repeat. The bridge is the town's responsibility if. Um it's a recommendation from the town to the village to put sidewalks in. They don't necessarily have to do that. And we have no control over that.
That's correct. It's just again, when we do a project, whether it was Whaley, North Grove, we put together what we think is the safest way. To rebuild that bridge because of the curve on this road and that the right of way altered where the bridge is going. We feel. That it is important to realign the road and to provide a sidewalk for people to safely go down there. If the village doesn't want to do that, that just, it's just a change order on the bid. We just drop it. It's. Does you you know what I mean? So but we at least need to do our due diligence to inform them. Of what we think would connect properly with our bridge. They don't have to agree with us.
So uh again, with the town being responsible for the bridges. That means everyone in the village and the town are financially responsible. Only the village taxpayers.
That's correct. So here's the deal. You could build a one-lane bridge. You can do a lot of different things, but you cannot do it with this grant. And if we give up that grant, the town taxpayers, including village residents, will have to pay. For that one-lan- lane bridge out of their taxes. Okay, and it and and I, I just think it's really great. We won this grant. It's an opportunity. We can look at it as dollars that are in New York State. But listen, we don't take this money. It's going down to the next town. The money's sitting there. It's approved. We're within the right of way.
And I and I think to add to that as well is that our bid would not be competitive, is what we were informed. If we were to apply for a one-lane bridge in that location.
Correct. Because of the safety standards would completely change. Again, the state DOT is not gonna let us rebuild what's existing there, which is an old farmer's. Car path. They're, they would not let us do that.
And I I think it's also probably worth explaining as well that the nature of this bridge, right? It's not a huge suspension bridge, right? It's gonna be similar to the one on North Grove, right? It's, so the quaintness of the area is not affected as much as maybe we think.
No, in fact, actually, when you look at a two-lane bridge, I was telling Supervisor Bach, all we're talking about is ten feet difference. Than if you did a a one-lane bridge. It really, it isn't as intrusive as it sounds scary, but it really isn't. And if uh and if you look at the work that the highway's done before on North Grove and Whaley, we've had a lot of compliments about the looks of what we built. Uh you know, everything's beauty in the eye of the beholder, but I think we build nice bridges. Um and that's exactly the design right to the T of what we would be doing on both North Grove and Church Street. Um it's, there's no differences.
Uh Dave, I had a quick question. Uh you've been the highway superintendent for how long now? Fourteenth year. If money was no object, we we were getting a grant either way, would you build a one-lane or a two-lane bridge?
I would build a two-lane bridge. Because of the right of ways there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Safety issue, which is to me.
Yeah, I I do have a question too, Dave. Uh I I ju- just so I'm I'm clear. How much control does the town, the village, the the community have over the design of the bridge? Keeping him, it, let's say it is a a two-lane bridge. If you wanted to make it. Even with town money added in or village money added in, make it something that was a little more ornate or less or. Had some character to it that would complement the area.
Yeah, Jim, I'm glad you've asked. Um I've actually had at least two, maybe three meetings with these Fillmore residents. And I've made that clear to them that we would like to hear their input on ways to beautify it, whether it's getting the tree board involved. Or maybe finding more money for those who drops. I know Mrs. Collins really likes them. I, we did that with both North Grove and Whaley. We went to the neighbors there and said, what do you think is gonna make this look? Good for you. As you see on Ridge, we built a little pocket park with some extra boulders. We're all for trying to do something within reason. To make this a a successful thing where everybody feels like, you know, they had input. But there is certain things that, like I, we've just talked about with the state DOT, we don't have. The same freedom that we did before. So I I'm all for whatever we can do to make.
Do we have, I guess is what I'm asking.
Pardon?
What what you say, we don't have free, the the freedom. Uh if we have, if it's a two-line state bridge, what freedom?
Okay, even on the design end, um we we're not gonna be able to do the rock wing walls like we did on the other ones. They're forcing us to do concrete ones. With the actual design and construction of that bridge, they have their way of doing things that are not negotiable. Okay, I'm talking about we as a town or a village could do things to beautify. What they're doing. Do you get what I mean? Um we are gonna submit a design to them, the preliminary, and they're either gonna approve it or they're gonna say, no, we don't like this. Or we don't like that and we'll have to mitigate that. So for instance, like the wing walls, it's already a change that I'm not really thrilled with. Cause I like the boulder wing walls, but again, I and we only have so much say. In defense of them, they they proud, they wanted the last two thousand years, I guess. I don't know. I mean.
It it and within that, uh the the confines of what you've described this evening, what Luke's described this evening. What has as a community, at least in uh East Fillmore, given you some ideas, giving you some?
Yeah, yeah. The one resident that's impacted the most, she has a quite a nice lawn that's gonna have quite a grade on it. I did tell her, once we get going, if she's willing to give us a right of entry, we as a highway department will come in and reef grade that and refill it. Um I've mentioned to a few of them, the trees that we can look into, talk to the tree board. Um you know, mostly, I think um. I've had really good communication with residents. They're all really great people. Um I think that the big thing is this sidewalk issue. And I I keep stressing that that's not the town's issue. But with that being said, we are putting it in our design because. That's part of just the process that we feel that it should have it, okay? Um if anybody wanted to talk about their sidewalk concerns, like I heard on the video with the village over some drainage issues, I definitely could answer those questions. There's nothing we can't build. Um I'm positive. If we could get in there, we'll do a good job. And I think a couple of years later, people see it all grow back and they'll be like, wow, this really turned out really nice. It's just always hard change.
So at this time, um because I'm sure there's people here that would maybe want to speak about it. Instead of putting you off to the next meeting, I would allow you to speak uh at the work session. If you, anyone wants to comment on. On the bridge, just come up, please, and give us your your name, your address and uh. If you could keep it to about three minutes, we'd appreciate that.
Uh Tim Stroh, three sixty Center Street. Uh question, Dave. You may or may not know this. Uh the village has a safety committee. Has a safety committee been consulted and have they presented a recommendation for this?
I didn't know they had a safety committee.
Can the uh town request that so they're uh put on record with the designated safety committee?
As long as it doesn't uh de.
Regards, Tim, are you talking about the realignment of the road or the sidewalk or?
Yes.
Yeah, I I didn't know they had a committee for that.
Yeah, right, Shane. Or did I see Shane?
You walked out.
Yeah, I did. Okay. Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Tim. Anybody else? Come on up. Speak right into the mic so we can all hear you.
Okay, my name is Droda Johnson. I'm at eight nine eight East.
Mike if you can, thanks. Thanks.
My name is Droda Johnson. I am at eight nine eight East Fillmore Avenue. Um my, our property is right by the one-lane bridge, um the red house right before Martin. Um. I am not opposed to the bridge. I'm not opposed to, I'm ho- hoping that the grant goes through. I'm not opposed of replacing the bridge. I am very opposed to the sidewalk. I'm also opposed to most of the road configurations when the first. Um plan or the first configuration was given to us by uh Mr. Gunner. Um that was a couple of months ago. The land was, our properties were all surveyed. The, the, he presented us with what, you know, what he thought or what somebody thought. How the road should be configured. Um this was it presented to the village and you probably all know this, okay? And and then um on the last week, Monday. Uh we had a meeting at the village and we ended up, um the neighbors all around our. Or or the neighbors all around the the bridge uh sound or signed a petition. And I'm I'm sure that you have already, I don't know if you have seen the petition, but basically, we're opposed to. Um the sidewalks, we're also opposed to um a lot of the road configuration. We don't feel that the money. I just, we don't have enough traffic and and also we have different issues like in, like in in the winter. Um of the unpredictability of Tannery Brook and and so forth. I'm, I don't want to read, I don't have the petition with me to complete. I don't know if you had an opportunity to. Well, we can, it'll probably be on the village. Um and I and we, I would ask that everybody here take a look at it. Bottom line is, we are opposed, the neighbors around the bridge were opposed to the configuration and the sidewalk. Also. On the um the agenda in- information on the village. I noticed that the the road design was redone again. Um so actually, there were surveyors out again about three weeks ago. On our properties, we questioned them regarding that. So like we, it's this, we had surveyors out at the uh the summer. They were going all through our properties. Nobody really gave us a heads up at first. I'm the type to go, you know, hey, what are you doing on my property, yada, yada. Okay, so they, you know, said, you know, the town. Actually commissioned to have all this surveyed. Three weeks ago, again. We had the survey, say, surveyors again, and I questioned again. Why? They really didn't have an answer except for saying that the town commissioned the surveying again. Okay, I mean, they're taking pictures of my house and everything, alright? So so. You know, that it would be nice in the future that if there's any more of this, that somebody gives us a heads up.
I just made a note of that.
Sorry?
I just made a note of that.
They, okay. Not only, I mean, with me, I'm outgoing, I just, what the hell are you doing on my property? But it upset some of my, you know, my neighbors, especially the. The older neighbors.
So we, um, just, just a quick note, we, we.
I do question, and and I don't mean this disrespectfully to Mr. Gunner because he was terrific. He did come out a couple of times to talk to us and we were talking about the design in there. So this is not a thing against Mr. Gunner. Okay, um but I do, I do question, well, I do question the two signs this morning. At eight o'clock in the morning, you know, two town trucks come up. And here's the two, well, I actually, I first, I just saw the one sign and it's a big sign regarding the East Fillmore project. And it has reference to Mr. Gunner and his phone number and yada, yada. So they put it on our property and and the sign is probably like this big by this big. When, when they were putting the the signs into, like on the side of our property. I mean, as they were pounding the stakes, the stakes were just going right through. That is my whole, my biggest thing about when somebody says, try to put a sidewalk in my, my front yard. And that, and actually around the curve also, it's just, everything is so wet there, okay? Um so that, that is, and I know that's not your decision, but I just. One of the the reasons why I'm opposed to the sidewalks. Not to mention the unpredictability of Tannery Brook. I am hoping that if one, when, when the bridge is, the new bridge comes into play. I am hoping that part of that creek bed gets dug out a little more so it can handle a little bit more water. I don't know if that would even be in the works with the bridge. I mean, you were talking about the stones and and and, okay? Because. Uh right, right now we're okay. And I was kind of, I was a bit worried this week, but it didn't happen. But almost every year in the spring, that creek goes over, okay? It just doesn't have, it doesn't have enough of it. Uh you know, to handle all the water, okay? Um, okay, so my last con- concern is. Not concerned, but who's gonna make the final decision on the bridge? I mean, this is a a a done deal, because we asked that at the village and they didn't, they really didn't have an answer. Okay, I'm I'm just, that's what I'm trying to go through. I know, I know, I know. And Dave and I are gonna be best friends after this, so I just uh. I already teased him about that or when he was explaining everything, because we were. He, um you know, as far as far as the the sidewalk. Okay, the last thing, okay. When it comes to the road configuration, and this is just my, well, I think it's not only my opinion, but other people's opinion. As you're going up the bridge, or as you're going up the road towards a bridge up to uh up East Fillmore and you're coming around the bend. There's just a lot of trees and and that. And and for many years, we have, I have suggested, I think I've talked that to the town, but I have to the village. Cut that down, clear that up. So this will, when people come up, either way, they can see. Okay, right now you can, you can see a little better because there's not so much. You know, foliage and and leaves and so forth, okay? But there, there are some, to me, there are some common sense things that can just be done. That are not gonna cost a lot of money. That's, you know, and, you know, kind of preserve. The integrity of our area. So, okay, Dave, I'm gonna have you.
Thank you. Droda is better a leader on this and I thank you. We've met probably four times. Um so a few things to start with. First off, I want to apologize about the surveyors. I I didn't, wasn't aware of their date line of when they come or not. Um in defense of them, I don't really think it's common to notify residents. I think surveyors do do that a lot, but I will say that I will let our engineer know that from now on, at least get it to us. So we can put it on the email chain. Okay. Well, they did that because they're marking where the property lines are. Okay. Okay. I promise you I'll look into it. Yeah. Okay, yeah, I'm sure they were doing their job and it was the right thing. What's unique about this property, as you know. The the property lines of the village don't match the road. Literally, your side of that bridge is the property line. And then heading into that woods downstream. Literally, your side of that bridge is the property line, and then heading into that woods downstream quite a ways is where the real property line is. So, that's my first, I, I, I apologize, and I will let Jerry, Jerry couldn't make it tonight. We didn't know about this until the last minute, or Jerry would have been here, that's our engineer. Um, and, uh, the second thing was with the signs that got put up today. That's normal, we've done that on every one of our bridges, in fact, most people compliment us on that, because what it does is the, the immediate residents there know what's going on because they're contacted. That's for the next six months to let everybody know what's coming, okay, it's, it's a sign that says that there's a project starting April first, and that, uh, it'll be done late, I think they've put December on there or something. It's to give the whole neighborhood, you know, uh, a clue that we're coming. It also has our number, and I think an email on there, and it's somewhere that you can call with, with, it does have my name on it. One, one face in each way, right? Now, where they were placed, uh, we had, uh, Superintendent of the Village Matt Hay was the one that told us where to put them. If they did put them in an area that you didn't like, let us know, um. Okay. And, and so you mentioned how easy it was to hit the. Right. Okay, so the reason why I had them do it today is because the frost ain't there yet, and to try to pound that a month from now. So I literally told them peel that snow off because it's gonna be like mush, so that was a good thing, because that's very hard to pound those posts in. Um, so the next thing is, is I am now in charge of the reconfiguration of that road, that's an engineer, affirm that it has done that. Um, your original preliminary has now gone to a final preliminary, I don't believe you have a copy, we haven't met since then, but the town board has that copy.
I do have two copies.
Okay.
One that was presented to the village on November seventh, which.
Uh, that's not the final preliminary, me and Chuck met, what, we finally got the final preliminary only a week or so ago, and there was issues with fitting that sidewalk in there, um, and that's why we had some meetings about with the property lines. Um, but there, we have now a working design, and that, that has been put together, and it's ready to move forward. Um, when you say you don't like the reconfiguration, I just want to make sure it's clear to understand what would happen if we don't, and we have to match at the current configuration. Literally, as you came from Pine Street, it came around that curve towards the bridge. Because the new bridge is offset to the left from the current bridge, we would literally have to put a guide rail through the existing pavements there now to funnel the cars back over the new bridge. It will look very strange, and it's probably not very safe either, because you'd have to, you, you basically would start with a two lane road on East Fillmore, you would force it back to a one lane road as you approached the bridge, it would open up to a two lane road, and then it would do the same on the other side. So I just want you to picture that the bridge that we're putting in is going to the left of the current bridge, so. Yes, that part hasn't changed, where the brick, the road configuration we had, and I think that's why they resurveyed, there was some things that were real tight. And I think that's why they did go over there. Um, so, again, we're just on hold, I've given the village till, I believe I said I gotta really know by the end of December what their intent is. If not, well, then we have to just alter our plan, but it's not gonna alter the bridge. We can only make a recommendation what we think is good for the village. Um, that's gonna ultimately be up to them.
There's been three, so there's three reconfigurations on the road now. Because I have.
Why don't you, I'll get you the final one, I don't, did anybody bring a copy, they could, yeah, I, they're not much different, Drotta, they're similar, it's just.
You bring one, Joe?
I did. In fact, actually, I don't think by your house there was any change, it's more, if, I, I just didn't bring it, uh, but we aren't. Okay, and now the board knows, is there is, the next stage to our process is, once we know what the village is doing, our process is to have a public meeting with all of you. And that's when we bring big drawings, not just this little thing that frankly, you, you'd have a hell of a time figuring this out, um, we'll be bringing boards to show you this. Uh, we're just on hold with the village on the sidewalks and the road configuration. If we don't get, you know, if they don't participate in this project, well, then it's gonna be gro- grossly altered, okay? Um, at that time, we'll still have our public meeting and we'll say.
Could you speak into the, could you speak into the mic, because no one. If you, if you're talking, speaking in the mic, yeah.
That comes right out of there.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I can't.
So did I answer all your questions, because I think you have a ton of people here. But I, I can talk all night, I'm happy to do it, Mr. Supervisor met with me today. I, I just want you to know, this has been going on for twenty years, I mean, these Fillmore projects, it's just finally coming to fruition.
Like the Peace Bridge.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, you're, are you gonna put that on, like, on the website, like, what the village, it's the, the final configuration? Or do you think it's gonna get refigured, or do we not worry about it and wait until?
Yes, because until we know what the village is doing, we didn't plan on releasing our preliminary. Because it's, we know what we want.
Okay.
But it's, we're on hold.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So wouldn't it be to your advantage to maybe show the village, this is what we're doing, or?
I did, I had a meeting where I went there and talked to them.
In front of everybody, you did?
You were at that meeting, weren't you?
At the first one, I was.
That's all. Councilman Wuchenski reached out to them and offered our services there, and
Where I.
Our town engineer, the village did not want us to come, they said that we weren't needed, so I, we, we were told that we didn't need to attend. Or we would have.
Yeah, we went to one meeting, you, you presented with the engineer, I went to a subsequent meeting, and then we offered to come to the meeting as well last, last week, but we were told that we, we shouldn't come, so.
Yeah, we, we actually wished we would have, because there were so many great concerns that we could have answered.
And one, one, one point, just to.
We are on YouTube.
I watched it.
We watched it, yeah. You're, you're on YouTube here as well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one point about the information is that, uh, we apologize, I think if there's any, you know, we try as hard as possible to inform residents, um, and we, we have invested recently into a new program that will text and email and call our residents who sign up for information, even geographically locating within that area, so, um, you know, we, we do try to inform as best possible, realize that there's, there's progress to be made, but have invested into that in order to be able to communicate better with the residents, so.
Anybody else want to speak on, on the East Fillmore Bridge? Nobody going once? Twice? Okay. Then we're gonna move on to our next meeting, thank you very much, everyone.
Jim, I'm gonna take five, I don't know if you need me here for the.
Okay, we'll take a couple of minutes break, and then we're gonna go into our regular meeting. Okay, everyone, we will start with our regular meeting, um, and tonight, um, we, we have a public hearing on the site plan for the B and B at seventeen fifty seven Emery Road. So, we will start that public hearing at eight o'clock. And if anyone is here to speak uh, about it, please come up to the mic and give us your full name and address. Anybody? Seventeen fifty seven? I can't hear you, have to talk right into the mic, please.
Craig Polston, seventeen fifty seven Emery Road, wife Christina.
Okay.
Uh, we have a, uh, a studio apartment above our garage, attached garage to our main residence, and we're putting in a proposal to be able to short term rent that property.
So you, you are the seventeen fifty seven?
Or the owners, okay, I didn't, I was saying, I didn't know if you only needed opposition.
You're coming to oppose it?
No, it's anyone at, at all, yourself or anyone else, doesn't matter, so can speak on it, so, it's, it's a public hearing, so, um, is it just the one?
Six hundred square foot studio apartment, yeah.
Yep. And, and you, anything else you want to give us?
The only, the only, uh, addition that we needed to provide, in my understanding, was, uh, the parking situation, it was a concern with the village, um, and we took some photos, submitted those to show that there's ample parking.
There was, when you said the village, you meant the town?
Well, the village advised us to provide, um, to, to provide proof that there is ample.
There's.
Yes.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Yeah, sorry for the verbiage, that's a mistake.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure what else you.
So they had issues with the parking list, did you see?
Additionally, in the parking, oh, sorry. They wanted to affirm that there was, um, enough parking for, for themselves, in addition to any future guests, both in front of the garage, alongside the garage, and down closer towards the road.
Okay, and it was a positive?
Yeah, they should, you should have received a copy of that.
Yeah, I don't know why.
This is owner occupied, plenty of parking, plenty of space.
Anything else you want to offer to us? Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Is anybody else here to speak on that? I would ask, were the neighbors, um, notified? Just looking at, they were, yeah, neighbors were notified. Okay, nobody else? And we will close this public hearing at eight oh three. Eight oh three, and, uh, there was no opposition, I would, um, ask the board if, um, there's any discussion at all on this?
No, I think it, uh, fits in with, you know, we had discussed eventually coming up with a short term rental policy, and I think the thing that's been consistently mentioned, and that is owner occupied, so, uh, I think this fits in nicely with the way we had been thinking about this.
And do we, do we want to add into, um, the motion to approve the condition that when and if the residence is no longer owner occupied, that the B and B use is no longer available in the, in the motion, if we're gonna vote on it?
Yeah.
As suggested by the planning board?
Sounds good.
Anything you look, good, all right? Then we will move on. He approved all the minutes, do I have a motion to approve the November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two work session and meeting minutes?
So moved.
Motion by Joe.
Second.
Second by Jim, any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed, and that is carried. Next, we have an, uh, audience, this is an opportunity to address the board on any items on the agenda, and also the Mill Overlook. We added it in for you because we kept you here so long.
Thank you very much.
Um, name and address, please.
I'm, uh, Matthew Sotland, I live at eleven forty-five Mill Road, which is, uh, neighbors with Mill Overlook, uh, if you're driving up Mill towards Orchard Park, I'm on the right before the overlook. Uh, I moved there in, um, June of twenty twenty, and, um, over the period of time, I've had numerous, um, issues and, 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 uh, interactions with, uh, people at the overlook, both during the day, uh, and at night. Doing a multitude of things, whether it be, uh, smoking marijuana, uh, blasting their music at late hours. Um, actually driving on the overlook, the grass area, where I've called the cops and let them know. Um, I've met the police up there, uh, most recently when someone was driving actually on overlook, uh, actually on the grass property, and, uh, during the discussion with the police, the police said that unfortunately, because there's no posted signs of what the rules are with this open space, because it's technically not of, um, a park. You know, it's kind of a gray area, and no one really knows that the police can't enforce what they don't know to be the rules. So all that I'm asking is for some clarification, maybe with some signs, like, I know that the town parks close at, at dusk. Maybe there's, and if that's what you, you know, is deemed to be the rule, that a sign is put up, so that if there are people there blasting their music at night, that the cops can go there and say, hey, here's a sign, please, you know, vacate. Um, I know that in the summertime, you know, I can smell marijuana from my house, you know, from there, uh, not just at night, but a lot of hours, I also know that the town parks are a smoke free zone. You know, maybe the open areas could also be a smoke free zone, um, so I'm just asking, uh, your.
What's saying, Dave, what signs are up there now?
I want to apologize, Councilman Schneider's on top of this whole issue for you, uh, he called me a couple of weeks ago about it. And I did order the sign, and it's been made, um, because of the storm, it's sitting on my desk. I, I was hoping tomorrow to do it, I know that sounds pretty lame that. We're going to. But first off, but yeah, but then I did talk to Chief Krieger about this and. There is a code for all, and it does specifically say all town parks. So there is a code that they can write them for. Um, but Shane did like that we're at least going to put a sign there to make it obvious. So we do have a nice sign. I think it says closed at dusk or something like that. But it's my fault. Chuck asked me to do that like two weeks ago and I just got. I had a little bit of things to do, but and and now with the snow up there, it's just, but anyway. We we are concerned and I will make it happen.
Thank you so much. So we're just going to treat that park or that space as a park to apply the same rule.
It is a park.
Is it a park?
I town, town land, parkland, yeah, just because it's a. Got an easement by the Open Space Committee is still a town park.
Okay.
Is there, is there an issue with people coming down by your house or is it more up towards the?
The most recent issue was.
It's not open spaces.
What you just said, fortunately, there was a vehicle that drove. Luckily, I have a fair amount of uh. Trees, larger trees that would prevent somebody from driving from. Mill overlook onto my property. Um, but I have had people. Uh, come onto my property in the wintertime with sleds and stuff and listen, you know. That's, that's a good thing. That's, I mean, it's not a bad thing, right? But. You know, when someone's driving a vehicle. And they're doing like, you know, three sixties and stuff and revving their engines, you know, and it's dark out. You know, my kids get nervous and.
Yeah, on the grass.
On the grass. Yeah, I I did call the police, so there there should be some sort of report to that, but um, they responded very quickly. But, you know, they. They said they really couldn't do anything.
So were they still driving when the police showed up?
No, no, but I I went up there. I beat the police up there. Um, obviously, because I live right there and, you know, I could. Tell. Just from the. The tires, who was, who was the culprit, let's call it. But they, you know, once the cops came, it was kind of like a scatter. So.
That's a shame because that is prime birding or the birds nest there, though.
There's, there's an immense amount of deer. Uh, and wildlife, you know, and I think I I know that the open space person was here earlier and it's ironic that I'm here tonight. Unknowing that he was here tonight, you know, trails would be beautiful there, but at the same time, there is a lot of wildlife that would probably be disturbed.
That was one of the concerns they had. They walked through the property and there was, yeah. Did you walk through it too?
Yeah, the idea, it's it's down the road, but the idea was to put the dedicated trail and I have the opposite side where your property is. So they would, you're, 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 yeah, along that line. And then that rest could be left because I think they don't hate it until after the birds are done breeding.
That's correct. Right before I would call, you know, it really starts to get cold or it's supposed to get cold.
Yeah, well, that's, that's down the road, but they they're absolutely taking into taking into account the uh.
And thank.
The wildlife situation.
That was. Oh, it's not. Gotcha.
Sorry to keep you here late on.
No, no, it's, it's all right. I'm just happy that you guys, you guys acted very quickly. So thank you.
Hopefully it'll work, it'll help.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else want to address the board on any items that are on the agenda? Okay, then we'll move on to unfinished business.
We got a talkative night tonight, don't we?
Uh, we have the seventeen fifty seven Emery Road site plan. And uh, do you want to make a motion in that, Chuck?
Sure.
You make a motion?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to approve the uh. Post-site plan application at seventeen fifty seven Emery Road. Um. With the following stipulations is that the uh, site plan is updated, show existing conditions. Maybe you've already got this list. But to show existing conditions, driveway materials and turnouts. And also add the condition that when and if the residence is no longer owner occupied, that the B and B use is no longer valid. And I have that motion.
And do we have uh, Chuck made the motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed. And that is carried. Will go on to be the special event permit application for Boise Road. And we need to amend that application to include. Uh, I believe Thursday through Sunday. Five to five to nine. And um, songs that would last between five and seven minutes. I ever found. What's that? Five to seven songs, I'm sorry.
He was just trying to make it easier for you to do the uh, the planning.
And uh, just with a caveat that uh, we'll keep an eye on it and if there's any um. Any issues. You would let us know or the police let us know, we'll. We'll meet again, communicate. So that would be the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Go ahead, Luke. Luke. Any discussion?
I just want to, I made some notes. So you had mentioned, what'd you say, the? What were the two caveats on the motion you made? The songs?
Yes.
And the.
Time.
Time.
And Thursday through.
Okay. And shut down due to weather, the request of the police. So, yeah, or if your own. Of your own observation, so.
Yep, any other discussion?
I think it's a, it's a good middle ground and thanks, you know, we we have the concerns of the neighbors. And so uh, I think we've, we've gotten to a good middle ground where every, everybody's unhappy, which is probably the correct way to end these things, so.
All right, all in favor?
I.
Opposed. And that's carried, and I appreciate again that you came in and talked with us and uh. And worked it out. So hopefully everything will go good for you and have a nice Christmas. All right, next, we have new business and we have the comp alliance contract. Um, that will give us a five percent discount. Um, for the next two years. I'm looking for a motion to authorize the supervisor to sign. For the term of uh, one one twenty three to twelve thirty one twenty four.
Uh. I'll make that.
I'll make that motion. All right, do I have a second?
I'll second, um. I guess you could open it to this guy.
Yeah, that's cool. So we got a motion. In a second.
Yep.
Okay, now with discussion.
I'm kind of new here, so you know.
Um, rookies.
Yeah, rookies, um. But uh, the the question I had is uh, uh, I've been happy with that and happy that the discount, uh, you indicated that there was going to be a a two year. So we're we're signing a one year with it with a guarantee of a a second year with the same rate?
It'll be a five percent discount. You can never guarantee the rate on work months count. You can't guarantee the the exact rate. It depends on your.
So it'll be a discount, whatever the rate happens to be.
You're rated on, on your safety.
Right.
It's your safety mod, so if. You know, we didn't have any. Any claims and all that, and we went on, we would be. You know. You, you know what I'm saying that.
Right, right, right. That I understand. Maybe I asked it the wrong way. I I thought you indicated there was a two, it was a two year contract.
It's a two year contract. With a five percent funding just decrease. So whatever they rate it, they will just decrease it to five percent.
Okay. Gotcha.
Per, per year.
Yep.
They can't lock you in. I, and I don't believe unless I'm wrong. They can lock you in each year. They do a, an audit. And depends on if if your. Claims are high or low or none. And that's how they rate you. And then they would give you that rating, which is everyone does it the same, so they can't build it up. You know, they can't build that five percent in there and then they'll discount to five percent.
Great, thank you.
Yep. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
I.
I opposed. And that's carried. And then the personal policy updates. We discussed to uh, have a motion to adopt the new proposed update. Policy.
Wait, what? I'll make that motion.
Motion by Chuck, do I have a second?
Second.
It's like my Joe. Any discussion?
Did you want to amend that in some way, Luke? You said.
Yep, yeah.
Well, I'm sorry, I forgot that.
I was looking at it up right now, so. It was, I think I closed it. I shouldn't have, yeah. Do we, do we want to?
All right, let's, we, we um.
Yeah, we have to rescind that motion.
Draw your motion.
I'll make a motion with Roman.
Okay.
I second your withdrawal of the motion.
So Luke, do you want to make a motion?
Yeah.
You want to add some?
Move to approve the um, proposed updated policy. With an amendment in three point zero four overtime compensation. In paragraph three, to delete the words and may be preserved comma used as time off or cashed out.
All right, do I have a second to that motion?
Thank you.
I'll make a second. Second by Chuck. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
I.
I opposed. And that is carried. Next, we have the Western New York South Hounds Scenic Byway. A letter of um. That they want us to put in for them. And it is a letter that's typed out. Did we want to change that? Did you say something about changing that? Happy Joe, okay. All right. Do I have a motion to authorize the supervisor to sign? Letter of support.
So moved.
Joe, do I have a second?
A second.
Second. Jim?
It's good to see that Mayor Krebs is still keeping busy.
What is that?
Well, Mayor Krebs is still keeping busy.
Yeah, he is. I don't think he's the mayor.
He's not, yeah, he's nice.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
I.
I opposed and that is carried. Next, the local law for video conferencing, setting the public hearing for December twelfth at seven P M. Have a motion to um, authorize.
So move.
Motion by Jim. They have a second.
Second.
Second by Chuck. Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
I opposed and it's carried. And then the motion for the local law. Where the video. Um.
Conferencing policy.
Policy, was it on here? Um, we probably should do it after the public hearing.
Yep.
So. Why do I have it in here? WS five eight. Okay. So we're not going to do that until next meeting. Okay. So five E is the local law and the adult code instead of public caring, the public caring would all be, we also at. Uh, December twelfth. At seven o'clock. Motion. So move. Motion by Luke, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe, any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed. And that is carried. Next, we have a request for rezoning at three fifty nine Quaker. Uh, this is to amend the site plan um. And build. Was that? To be zone.
We could.
Who's that for?
We could, right? Can we get Liz's thoughts on this before we, I mean, it's a, it's a. We're just referring it to planning board, but I'd like to. Hear about it.
Right, so C three does not allow for residential uh, development. Um, so in order to do this process, they would need to rezone.
So never comfortable doing. I mean, we'll see what the planning board has to say, but again. But at least it's in a good spot. Yeah.
And what's, is there precedent for that? I mean, this is kind of an interesting, they're, they're looking for. Theoretically more restrictive zoning. In the middle of it, well, what was, was industrial, but now it's.
Less restricted.
Less restrictive, yeah. No, well.
Well.
Residential is more restrictive in some ways and less restrictive in other ways. They're just, they're just going to a level that allows housing.
I mean.
You put a what?
Nuclear plant there.
Is there any indication?
But no, but but it is the property currently has, has the highest commercial use allowance. To it right now. Um, it doesn't look that way when you're going into or coming out of the village, but um. But that property is zone C three um, in order to make that multiple family dwelling, they would need to rezone to an. R three, R two is across. The street. Um, the E and um. So it's not out of. Entirely out of the realm of, you know.
Yeah, I I just.
But yeah, it needs to be rezoned and then they would have to have a site plan. They would have to have stormwater. Um, they would have to have a SWIP.
It's, it's uncomfortable because of a couple of different things. Number one, the, the current comprehensive plan that we're referring to does. Have that area as development for commercial properties. I remember you and I wanted to put commercial out even farther down twenty eight because it's really makes sense to put it there. Yeah, and and so now if we, we're going to be finding out about our comprehensive plan grant, so we'd be uncomfortable to rezone that. And then start working on the comprehensive plan next year that might have the exact opposite of what it is that we're asking.
Let's make it ahead of, let's give it to the planning board.
Yeah, just pointing out for Tim, just that we've got these. And for the owners, if they're listening, that I don't know if this is a, this is not a sort of home run kind of thing. I think it's going to be a little more complicated if at all possible. But that's just my thought on it.
The motion to refer to the planning board.
So moved.
Motion by Joe.
Second.
Second by Chuck. Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed and that is carried. Next, we have a payment for uh, Peyton Barlow for the pool restoration renovation project. In the amount of one forty eight, eight fifty two sixty six. I have a motion authorized. This is payment number two.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Chuck. Have a second?
Second.
Second by Jim, discussion?
I think it's looking good, good on there.
Gave him.
Yeah. A little snack there, but they got the concrete down, so.
Yeah.
But we're getting.
The roof, the roof is done, right? Or no, I was down there. Really? That's looks nice. I don't know, maybe we should just keep the old roof.
Yeah. It. I'm sure by the end of the. Mother Nature cooperates a little bit by the end of the week, the roof we framed in.
I'll get you, all right. That is looking good down there.
Yeah.
It's a good thing we did the roof. If you don't know what you don't know until you get. Take the stuff off and find all that rat and stuff, so. Very good thing we did do.
Yeah, well, just the tail on that because it's coming down the pipe here is, is there was twenty some sheets and I don't even know if that was a file of rotted. And de-laminated plywood that they replaced on that roof, so. And your opinion as a construction expert, rotted sheets of plywood is a bad thing, yeah? Yeah, pretty much, pretty much, I don't know. Yeah, the floor is not so bad.
That's going to be a project. Uh. Any other discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed and that is carried. And next we have the payment number three for Floyd Albert for the Church Street Bridge project in the amount of thirteen one twenty two. Oh, three, I have a motion to approve.
So I'll move.
What's my Chuck?
Second.
Second by Luke. Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed and that is carried. Next, we have recreation is the request from Chris to hire Elizabeth. Astrid, Ash, I don't know how you say that. Anybody help me?
Oh, such.
Such. O S U C H A is a lifeguard R P T. She'll be primarily working with East and occasionally I. Uh, learn our two swim programs. Um, she has years of experience as a swim instructor. And her first day, approved her first day would be the day she is able to sign her papers. Uh, she is a non-resident. She lives in Alden. And she would start at a rate of fifteen dollars per hour. I have a motion to approve.
So move.
Which my Chuck. Any second?
Second.
Second by Joe, any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed and that is carried. This is another request from Chris. It's a budget line increase request. Um. To reflect additional revenue generated. Uh, a larger donation of the town's third of July celebration donation allowed us to obtain more bands for parade. So, amount of grease to be increased nineteen hundred, the new balance is forty three hundred. Um. And in in the line it's going into, the new balance is five hundred and thirty one dollars and seventeen cents. So did very well with our donations there this year. Uh, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Joe, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Chuck, any discussion?
Is there any chance of getting Whitesnake this year?
Any what?
Any chance of getting Whitesnake to perform this year?
And not for that kind of money.
All right, fine.
Wow.
All in favor?
I.
Opposed and it is carried. Next, we have communication reports. We have the October two thousand twenty two. Senior Center Building Department Work Recorditions and Dog Control. Next, we have business from the board members and I'll start with Joe.
Uh, thank you. We uh, Luke and I have been working on Code Red and it's. Fully operational from a uh, it exists. So now we just have to finalize our policies. Uh, we did a test run. You guys all got messages and it's a very cool tool. It would have been great for the storm except for it was a. It would have been great for the storm except for it was a regional event, so a lot of the news is being broadcast, but um You know, with this bridge project with all these We can, we can target it geographically, we've talked about, we can create groups for the rec department, groups for the senior department. It's really going to be nice. I think people are really going to enjoy it once they get rolling on it. It's just a matter of getting them to buy in. We have a certain number of uh Phone numbers that are just created based on like availability and white pages. But I suspect those are going to be mostly home phone numbers that may or may not exist anymore. But once we can start a campaign to get people to sign up, I think they're going to be very happy.
Sign up and you're using it? Other people talk and say, oh, this is great. You got to do the sign up, you know?
Absolutely. Shutting down the four hundred, all that kind of stuff, which don't even leave your house.
Yeah, I don't think anyone had to.
No, yeah, I don't think there's A lot of people testing that one.
Yeah, I think I think some good examples of how we could have used it are like the garbage collection. An announcement that garbage collection is not going to happen on Thursday or Friday because you can't, well, Friday was a bit of a question mark, right? Whether or not that would have been We don't have it on Friday.
On Monday though, too. A lot of people didn't know it was going to happen, so you just, and they were out there.
The town hall being closed on Friday was another one. Um, Dave could have used it, I think, on numerous occasions. I think we have to shout out to Dave for being very proactive and informing our Residents of what was going on.
If we'd get in the park and let it to town all.
Was yeah, yeah, yeah. So it's just a good way to communicate and keep that that open. One thing that we, Joe and I are working on is to try to Propose And we need to get it on the work session, I think, I guess probably for next, hopefully next meeting, but maybe not, I might not be here. Um, to talk about different ways to sign up. So before we push it out as as and try to get people to sign up, We want to make sure that we understand how we're going to use it. That way, people, when they sign up for emergency, they'll also have the option to sign up for general notifications. Rec department, if they want to use it, senior center, if they want to use it. Otherwise, once you sign up, Then it'd be difficult to go back in and sign up again for like the different ones. So we want to get that all taken care of before we really start using it.
And Councilman Shensky and myself were talking about this a little bit earlier. It seems that we kind of Uh, had kind of a rationale here lately, but what is the biggest complaint we've had lately? It's not notifying people of of whatever Whatever's happening there. And this will be one more tool to allow us to do that. So I think it's a good thing.
And the other
Sorry, Joe, they took your time.
I know, and that's, I just kind of get it going and then everybody says a group discussion. So the next thing for you guys to talk about, uh, we also Had mentioned uh, T-Mobile has that Uh, fifty thousand dollar grant that can be used to uh help your community in sort of anyway, but they're going to want it to be pretty. Next, I I see Tim's here. Uh, one of the things we discussed uh, looking into the uh ADA compliance of the two big ballparks. I don't know where things are on raising money for the turf fields over there. But we've an opportunity to get some money to make those dugouts, so you know, people can get in there. Right now, they're pretty narrow, they're mucky. Uh, I think that would be a good project to make that sort of wheelchair compliant. Bigger space, better benches, things of that nature, move those fences back. And I, and I think that would be an attractive project. Actually, Luke came up with that idea. But um, looking into it, just other giving away fifty thousand dollars to five hundred communities Around the uh country. And if we can take a stab at that free money, why wouldn't we? And that uh, application actually is actually due by the end of the month and we'll work on that.
End of the year.
And Well, in the next month.
Yeah.
Correct, we'd be kind of done for otherwise. But we're going to take a stab at it and see uh, if we can come up with that money and put it to good use.
Yep.
Uh, I do have a sort of a question. I did speak with uh April Heartlove after our last meeting from uh Heartlove Benefits About when uh, the sort of the town meeting would be Uh, to discuss the benefits with the employee sheet. They hadn't set up a date yet. Uh, I didn't know if you, Jim, or anyone had heard about a date.
No, I mean, last week was lost, right?
Right, right.
Um, I know Kathleen and with the holiday. You know. So um They they will notify though when it does. Okay. Just off putting it together. Luke?
Yeah, so we're going to the code red, social media policy, which is a part of that as well. Um, and uh, want to say that the Climate Smart Community Task Force, we had our first meeting. A very energetic group, was a great idea to get the high schoolers on board. Uh, when when we go through the points, we are about ten away, I think, from a silver actually status. So I think we're pretty far along here. Um, but it was a very energetic group and they've been writing and working on things afterwards, so Think that's going to be a pretty active committee. Um, the other thing would be uh, to to talk about is that uh Supervisor Bach and I will be meeting This week, right, with the fire commissioners to talk about ambulance services in the town and a long-term solution. Just so the other board members know that that's that's happening. It's that's going to be a long, long term thing, far off, but uh, just so you know, that's kind of in the back of our heads.
But there is it.
Um.
That was Wednesday.
I thought it was Wednesday as well, yeah, because the vote, the uh, East Aurora's vote, oh no, next week.
Next week, okay.
Yeah, but still before the next meeting, so.
Yeah, okay. It wasn't my calendar.
On the seventh. Wednesday.
I just wanted to mention that the uh boiler for the pool is in, now in in it's it's ready to be installed, I should say. Um, that was supposed to tentatively happen last week. Obviously it didn't, so but it won't be long. We'll have the new boiler and then Someday the gas company will come in and and hook up the gas that they have to tear out to put the addition on them. Who knows? Hopefully by spring we'll have Hot water to put in the pool.
Anything else?
That's it.
Uh, I just want to say that I have received many, many compliments on the job that Dave and his men have done Over the storm. And it was incredible what you guys have to deal with and uh Just wanted to uh thank both you and your men for what you, the hours you put in because Um, I know it's a long, long day. I called Dave a couple of times. He was miserable. He been up three days. I get it. I get it. I get it, but I I I had a another resident up in Peanut Park. Up at Hill Crest there, they call it Peanut Park. He um He said that You couldn't believe how good a job you guys did. You got in there with the loaders and did the cul-de-sacs and Uh, he was telling me this, so I'm just passing on. Great job. Well, wait a minute, wait, wait. I gotta go to staff reports first.
Yeah, well, just one thing about that too. Joe and I were talking earlier as well, like if there's anything, you know, like there's trainings and stuff, if you need, because we are town employees, right? So if there's a way we can help out, I don't know what we would do in the next emergency.
You all look very uh
Did send me a text right in the middle of it. I'm here to help if you need me. Yeah, we just are helpless. So if there's a way to make us helpful at some point, then uh, you know, let us know because, no, seriously.
I don't think he's in
I think it's like Where my wife is baking her pie, she, it's the same advice Dave's going to give you, stay out of my way.
All right. Audience, anybody want to address the board on any items? At all? Uh, no one out there? Oh, Rod, come on up.
Rod Simeon, eighty-five vibe, Eric Cordy, East Aurora. Uh, this is actually, I'm here on behalf of Paul Ernst, we couldn't make it today. Representing the uh Z B A uh Just a heads up, uh You folks are going to probably get from us a proposal to Codify uh, the, a one-year requirement To secure a building permit once a variance is granted. Um. Having heard no objection from legal counsel and having uh Liz tell us that other towns have this in their code, it would be a great benefit to The uh, the town to have this uh Codified so that we don't have to Hopefully remember it with every variance we pass. We've had numerous occasions where, in fact, one Really bad incident where a variance was granted ten years ago. The guy wanted to Uh, revise his variance and there were a lot of objections because there were new neighbors and uh It was going to affect their property. He uh Conveniently dropped his variance and used his first one, so. And we we have a lot of examples of that 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 are on the books that We may not be able to get to, but future ones we want to take care of.
Good idea.
So we'll be meeting with Liz to Get the proper verbiage and where to insert it and hopefully you folks will approve it.
Great, thanks, Rod.
Okay, any questions? No, thank you.
Thank you. Nobody else out there? Then we'll go to staff reports. I'll start with Tim. Anything? Anything from the library? Dave, you're on.
Yeah, so the number uh, it was a real tough storm, really. Thank you for all the compliments. Um, we we learned a lot from the first November storm And uh, that helped us with this one. So I think we actually did better, but I just want to mention is is uh, one glaring weakness that I found That I didn't expect was uh, the lack of radios. And if you remember the week before the storm, We uh ordered new radios. Uh, unfortunately, we didn't have them. And I know at one time I said, I think cells will work. Let me tell you, they don't work. It sucked. All right, they call everybody on cells. So that's something we're moving forward really hard to get the radios in the trucks because You know, I I learned that you have to have that communication. It really made it very difficult. Um, we did not need any contractors to help us during the storm, so that's uh quite the achievement. Um, and we just put in our FEMA reimbursement. It should be close to the penny, ninety-eight thousand Five hundred and ninety-one dollars and sixty-one cents. That was about nine hundred ton of salt. On that one weekend, that was two hundred and eighty-seven point five hours of overtime with that little highway department. So I Everybody worked around the clock. Um, our plows averaged twenty-one hours a day for over three year, three days. Um, you couldn't push that iron any harder. So I'm real proud of how we handled it. Um, it was a lot of work, a lot of moving parts. I know we would post on the Facebook, trees were dropping everywhere, just, you know, it was, it was a challenge.
Did you include the fuel too?
Well, because it's FEMA rates, the FEMA rates include the fuel, so that worked out well. And I think I talked to somebody about that. The FEMA rates were actually really good for our plow trucks. Um, the high lift was really weak and the pickup truck was a joke. It was uh, so Yeah, so we're getting a hundred percent reimbursed. Um, we've been through this before, it might take six months, but uh, that's good news. Um Because uh, if you think about it, we literally had a month's worth of snow in one day. And so it was uh, and anyway, Jim was always available, talked to him many times till I told him to quit calling me because I'm too tired to talk. Luke, thanks for the offer. You notice I didn't respond? All right, anyway, but thanks uh, for uh supporting the highway department. They they all worked their hearts out.
Brad, I've read by you. Do you have anything?